Garber.
Here.
Mr. Miskowski.
Here.
Chairman Moore.
Yes. If you could please stand for a moment of silence. We do that in honor of what Schwann recently unexpectedly passed. Please join me in the place of allegiance.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, united government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a little agenda, and I need to add one more item under speech. Dean is Bravo. We're going to hold a public hearing on the D-6 year plan. We'll have Mr. Ron Pease give us a presentation prior to that. It's the second agenda I have this evening. Any other comments or questions regarding?
I'll move it out to the amended agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry.
Yeah, did we end the announcement go up? It has to go up a certain amount of time ahead.
Mr. Greenwood, the advertisement was properly done in the newspaper, but it is absent from a prior agenda. So what I'm suggesting to the board this evening is that you hold a public hearing tonight as scheduled, but let's advance the item to the main night meeting. And we would also have a public hearing that night to allow the public to have more comment. And then you can consider adopting it at that time out of fairness to the public. I think that would be the best way to do it.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Chairman Moore.
Aye. Okay, we'll go ahead and open up the public comment period as usual. Individuals here, one three minute period. If you're representing a group, you have five minutes. Please come forward, state your name and your district. Go ahead and open the public comment period. If anyone online wishes to speak. Please use the raised handkerchief. Seeing no one for public comment, we'll go ahead and close. General, any, if there were any minutes or corrections, comments? I did want to notice that we have a resolution 22-27 Public Service Week Affirmation. There'll be a variety of things going on this week. This week.
May.
May, sorry, next month. Showing appreciation for public service workers. And also 22-28 declaring May is no help or in this month. Just note those on the agenda if I could get a motion.
Move it out to the amended agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry.
That motion is properly seconded.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Chairman Moore.
Aye. Okay, moving right into our first public hearing. It's ordinance 03-22 to amend the King County Code to follow the State Code on danger codes. Mr. McRoberts, if you please say so right now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. State Code was amended regarding dangerous codes. And as permitted by State Code, King William has a parallel ordinance that largely mimics the requirements of state statutes. But because it must indeed be parallel and the State Code has changed, it is time to open the county code to reflect state law.
Any questions, comments? Okay. We're not going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Same rules as public comment, individual's three minutes, group five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. Oh, I'm Jeff Walton, your Chair, our good in Second District. Just wanted to throw this out there down this resolution. And I know it's corrupt, I've done a lot of work on this. I don't see why we just can't delete that from our code. We gotta just follow the state law on that. I think it may save us in the future of having to keep up with what changes are going to state code. And we're doing the exact same thing as he said, we mirror the state code on that. I would just recommend we just do away with it all the way. Thanks.
Hello, Internet Webhead District. And as a aside from this law, I would like to keep in the part on the definitions of the county code, which says, an owner means any person who has a right of property and or keeps or harbors an animal, has an animal in his or her care, feeds, warms, and otherwise maintains the animal, or acts as a custodian of an animal, or any person who permits the animal to remain in or about his premises occupied by him or her more than 10 days. So what that tells me is if you go and feed an animal and you take care of it for 10 days, he's yours. So consequently, you are culpable and responsible for the animal and the behavior of them. So I want to see that for sure, the owner or the person who cares for the animal is culpable. Thank you.
Anyone else in the studio? Mr. McRoberts, would you care to comment on those items?
Sure. The term used in the statute as well as in the code here is owner. And owner is defined as including a custodian, people that care or even fairly temporary custodian. They're the ones responsible for the animal. So I believe it's in there. We could certainly either delete the thing completely, although that would take another advertisement and a public hearing. Or we could, in fact, amend this thing further to insert the State Code ordinance definition of owner, which includes all the things that the lady has just mentioned.
What are the recommendations that Sheriff Walton made? Is that something that look out?
Absolutely. A number of counties don't have a parallel ordinance. The King certainly does. So you can do. My advice is if you're considering deleting it per the sheriff's recommendation, is to go ahead and adopt this tonight. Bring yourself into compliance and then if you wish to have to taxi ordinance amendment to delete it completely, you can do that in future.
You don't think that would be confusing? Put it one in and then take it right back out?
Of course, yes, it would.
I'm more inclined, well, I don't know, we in discussion on this, we still in public hearing.
Seeing no one else, go ahead and close the public comment period.
I will be honest, I recommend by the sheriff and his offices would be handling it. I've got to go along with him, but then you don't have to keep up with every time the State Code would be changed. It's already there. That's the way I would do it.
So this is all grown from the State Code amendment, correct?
Yes.
We just duplicate, they just correct.
It took a little bit of doing to conform the State Code to your, the way your county code was written. But yes, it's word for word, State Code. There's probably a handful of exceptions where, you know, I might have done something that's slightly clearfobbed, but it's the State Code.
Your, the sheriff's recommendations, the direction we want to go, fine with that.
As far as Mr. Parker's recommendation, go ahead and approve it this evening and delete it at a later date.
No, I don't. Just leave it up.
Yeah, we would have to do an ordinance to basically repeal the ordinance is what you'd be doing. So if you don't adopt this tonight, I can certainly prepare it for you all in the future.
If we don't do anything, does it use that?
If you do nothing, then it just does.
Yeah, so that's the easiest way to do this, correct?
You can take a motion to say we're not going to adopt it, or you can just simply take your action. Either way.
Well, right, I would think positively, we would probably prefer a motion to table, right? Yeah.
Motion to table, sir.
The motion to table, the ordinance, and properly starting the further discussion.
Ms. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Chairman Moore.
Aye. Right next, the agenda this evening, we're going to have D-6 year plan. Mr. Ron Pease come up and give us a presentation. And again, we'll hold a public hearing on May night.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Honorable Board members, staff, and the district lead public. Good evening, my name is Ron, and I work for the Department of Transportation. And the Code of Virginia requires that county listed supervisors and contractual does be not formulate a secondary six-year road improvement plan and a priority for this secondary improvement budget. And I have a public hearing, it's being conducted for fiscal year 2023 through 2028. Six years. And as importantly, the 2023 budget, which will be activities that could be accomplished in the next cycle. This year's budget, again, is the first year of the secondary six-year plan. The total amount budgeted in the plan is $818,613 over six years. This total amount of money includes telefees and the amount of $205,480. And unpaid road funds, $563,133. In updating the six-year plan, of course, we do this every year. Always. Then we had a COVID bad. But in updating the six-year plan, we've followed the priorities established last year before and dispersed with funds. As I mentioned, we have two types of money. Unpaid road funds, which have to be utilized on paid roads. And telefees as well. Currently on your plan is Route 634 Kentucky Road. That's the first priority that's a few years back for hard servicing that road. With the estimate of $78,206. As for those, this project will go to construction next summer, summer of 2023. The next one on the list is Route 633 Sandy Point Road. And again, this is the second priority of the county. And it's scheduled for hard servicing also in 2023. With a project fully funded at that time. With an estimate of $120,173. The next priority, the fourth one, is Route 617 West Spring Forest Road. And it is on your plan to be hard serviced in 2024. When we'll also have enough money at that time to do that with an estimate of $80,833. The fifth priority is Route 627 East St. John's Church Road. And according to what we have for you, we'll have money for that in 2025. And the estimate toward that will be $79,333. Sixth priority on the list is Route 621 Green Level Road. And that will be scheduled for hard servicing in 2026. We will have accumulated that much money at that point in time for that. And that's pretty besides the job, the estimate is $228,333. And as always, we historically have been able to self perform these hard services, these programs. In other words, I'm the maintenance. I've made this budget, made this dollars, made this person up. But we actually one of maybe 30% of residencies that are able to self perform these things. The reason I mention that is that it's considerably cheaper when we do that. And these estimates, we feel very confident in them. And generally, there might be a little bit of money left over after we self perform it. And we just move that money ahead on your plan. Another project that is this year is Route 600 West River Road. Or we'll be adding a right turn lane coming out of 600 towards Richmond. And Route 360. We say is currently under construction. And because we've been out there and had our incidental concrete contractor prep to do the curb and gutter work. And we'll also be with some hired equipment performing that work as well at turn. It's already funded, it's already on the plan. We'll be doing that in the next couple of months. And that did have a estimate of $383,914. And it's fully funded out of your secondary six-year plan that we already have in place. Lastly, we have a countywide category, if you will, for engineering and survey for projects such as these that we do. And over the six years, at the end of the six years, there'll be about $354,638 on your plan. And we feel right now that that's a comfortable amount for engineering survey and for these transit projects that we do to be in the plan. And it's almost entirely in the out years as well at this point. 24, 25, 26, and so. Keep in mind, this plan is only for improvements and new construction. Doesn't include maintenance work, patch and potholes, all the ditch removal and all those other things. And at this time, I'm available to answer any questions or try to answer questions or take questions back.
Sure. The West Spring Forest Road, recently it had to be used as a diversion to go around an accident. Is that going to be widened where two vehicles can go through? Or is it just going to be paved in its present width?
We're able to do just a tad, just a tad better. While the hard service.
So they still would not be able to pass?
My understanding is the finished product will be somewhere between 16 and 17 feet. Which theoretically.
Be tight with tractor trailer, correct?
Yes, as are many of our, I just want.
Mr. Hodges, I actually, last Thursday in the accident, I went home that way and went through the spring forest. It's tight, two vehicles, two cars or trucks. You're right, a school bus and a tractor trailer would have to inch through. Too long vehicles.
How many unpaid roads have remained in the county?
You know, I am subbing in tonight.
For hope.
Mr. McKnight. It's up to the Secretary of Transportation and the Highway Commissioner. Not that they're having champagne and rubbing elbows. What they're doing is the district's six-year improvement plan, public here, some of this public.
Really? When you mentioned, when you mentioned bathing, are we talking the tar and chip or as well?
Tar and chip.
Tar and chip.
I've already spoken with Mr. McKnight about this, but at the conclusion of the public hearing, I want to ask that we add Route 627 West St. John's Church to the list as well, here back line. He's already told me that they are eligible to be on the list.
Yes, Mr. Supervisor, he did talk to. And he did indicate that it meets the criteria. There are some criteria in here, 50 vehicles a day is a minimum. And he did indicate to me that it's been 50. And obviously, if you focus, you know, I don't know if it's absolutely necessary for you to do it now or even on May 4th. But we're pretty quick to, if that's what y'all want in plan, we can certainly, nothing else, but it's simply on the plan as your priority for next year's public hearing. Because it will be quite a few years off.
When you said some of it, it doesn't include the maintenance budget. What is the criteria for maintenance? But I've seen some roads that have hundreds of potholes and people complain about them. They come around, they'll fix five out of the 25. And then it'll just keep getting worse and worse. What criteria do you go by to actually re-surface a road that's already paved?
Um. In, in your written report, that we provided, you will see those types of repaving is construction. It's construction money. And secondary roads, as our primary, are rated with a van with laser technology, for example, to arrive at a rating number. And by and large, we utilize those kinds of things in traffic count as certain. But then they're prioritized, and we do our best to get them on the construction schedule for all of the payment season, which we're right in at now. But that's, that's how that's structured. And I do, you know, we do best. And one 804 road. One 804 road, that pothole, call it in. It really makes the system work better when you do that. Because it is a computerized thing these days. And we get the pothole request of the area headquarters superintendent can actually see it on map about the location. And they were able to, instead of running hither and fro, pothole at the time, were able to try to schedule work in an area.
This speaks of, how safe are these funds? You've allocated them in your planning document. How safe and where Virginia needs to do something, Virginia needs to, they relatively safe?
Totally. This is your money.
That's a good one.
These unpaid road funds are your money for your secondary road system. And there's not a lot of it out there, but there's no competition based on a formula. For unpaid road funds, you have to have unpaid roads. And then there's allocation per mile of unpaid road. And then you have telefees, really the only other money that really is out there right now are telefees that are collected. We collect them.
Can you maybe expand on the term telefees?
Telecommunications fees are fees that communication companies pay the state.
Universal services.
For having their equipment in state right.
Very good, any other questions, gentlemen? Thank you, Mr. Pease.
You're welcome. This wasn't really our quarterly report night. Or what I gave you in your packet. I see, see, our Department of Transportation briefing later on in the meeting. So I will be at your pleasure as far as doing the update or not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're not going to go ahead and open up the public hearing period. I know it's last minute, maybe I'm aware, but if you might come on up and make some, make your comments. We'll be going to entertain, we'll also redo this again on May night. So we'll have another opportunity. With that, public hearing, anyone who'd like to come forward? There being that, I'll close the public hearing. Wish to remind everyone that if you do want to provide your comment on the Zoom session, you have to call it in or email it in. To sign up for that, so you'll be recognized. Just a reminder. Ms. Branson, I guess you can put that reminder in the notice of the public show. All right. Going into whole business, we've asked Ms. Mary Shipman, our county representative on the public Monkey Regional Library Board Trustees to come and give us a, her perspective on the budget position.
Hello, my name is Mary Shipman, and I serve King William County as a member of the National Library Board Trustees. This is a volunteer position. I'm in, I think, the Second District, just in the house. That's right. One, one, we are one of the member of localities creating the Monkey Regional Library, King William, and we participate with other localities and we're responsible for funding to our share of the library operations. The library is made you aware of the needs. As a part of the FY 2023 budget request, the library provided to county staff with our budget request in December, which contained proposed increases for full funding of the hotspot program, books and material increase, update compensation plan due to wage changes, merit increase of 2%, salary compression, change in FICA, BRS, insurance and disability, health insurance increase was 15%. As well as reductions, we had in our revenue, we had interest income reductions, reserve fund spending reductions, and reductions to our state aid. The library presented our budget request in form early in March. The county administrator proposed budgets presented and he takes no increase for the library. Much like the library posed in its budget, the county's budget includes increases for staff compensation, both the library and the county facing similar demands and increase of staff compensation. The majority of the library's requested budget increase is being funded by other localities. Mitchell Land and Hanover have already approved theirs. The library provided an updated budget request to the county administrator three weeks ago. We let library customers know about the county's proposed level of funding for the library in 2023 and our associated costs, associated loss of service that it would cause. We understand that the board didn't appreciate this action, but our customers deserve to know what was happening in the budget process. You heard from many library customers at the public hearing on the budget. They shared incredible stories about how the library has been important to their lives and support, and they support the funding for the library also. Without an increase to libraries funded, the library will have to significantly reduce operating hours at the Evercane Building and West Point branches. The library has told you about our need for funding and residents that want the library service funding that you have been asked for the library. They don't want to lose the library services. They don't want to lose the library services. Library customers and the library hope you have a chance to review the library's budget and associated information and have had an opportunity instead of the impact of not funding the library. The board supervisors has a difficult job, that we understand, and it's often thankless. Funding or not funding the library will be your decision. We hope that you will consider the county administrator's proposed budget and revise the library with the requested funding and deserve the current, current level of site library service in the next year, 2023. Thank you for your consideration. Any questions?
Way answering stuff we asked last time. It's just the same thing that you said last time.
It's just a rehash of what we've already heard. That's why I don't want to ask you the questions that I have. You just, you're so.
Bishop, I will, I will say this. So the projected budget overall for Monkey Regional is about a million seven hundred thirty-eight thousand and forty-seven. Okay, so basically, the way that I do my, the state of Virginia is allocating about sixteen nine sixty-nine. Other sources, sixty-six thousand three hundred, which comes to a total of about eighty-three two sixty-nine. The way I do my, that's money allocated over and above any, any counts. So the way I do my, that should make what you're asking of your membership of accounts, about a million one hundred fifty-four thousand seven eighty-eight. So King William's share is ten percent. That should be more like five hundred fifteen thousand four seventy-seven. And they asked was about ninety-three one sixty-eight. I just have a problem with math, I think all was still. And I did ask Mr. Shipley to, if he could give me a number of the group email and went out to the citizens of King William and West Point, that was four thousand and ninety-one. We've had probably, if you add everything together, maybe twenty-five emails counting the people that appear. So, you know, that's, that's less than one percent that showed of concern. And it's still, I've heard from us, and usually, the email was not, it was never mentioned that we are contributing four hundred, four hundred and forty-seven thousand last year or something like this.
Four forty-four times?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it was misleading in, in that regard and phone calls that I've got. Once I explained that, the people did not know that.
We can all agree that things have gone up, especially salaries. We have not had an increase of over seven thousand dollars since the budget for 2020. Last year, we didn't even ask for an increase because nobody knew what was going to be happening within last spring of COVID. So unfortunately, it does kind of put us not having incremental increases.
No, I don't have any questions at this time, Mr. Chair.
Bishop, when I show on a spreadsheet here, the percentage change, probably don't have it. The documents says King William's increase was twenty-five percent. When I do the percentage calculation, I'm coming up with thirty-three point forty-two, as well as all the other counties. It was significantly different than what is shown on the percent change from twenty-two to twenty-three. Any idea, I hate to use Mr. Gardner's term, but how did that math work? Our, our ask went from four forty-four, five ninety-seven, five ninety-three, one sixty-eight. That calculates to thirty-three point forty-two percent increase, not twenty-five percent.
Okay, I'm not playing with the twenty-five percent in my mind. I'm being nice with the thirty-three percent.
Okay, so yours, your calculations seem to be like none. King and Queen listed was twenty-six point four. The calculation comes out to thirty-five point eight four. So I, I'm curious where, if there was some, this calculation's made, if there's different ways of doing this and I'm not familiar with, show that, you know, how it comes out. I don't, I'm not sure where we go from here, Jim.
Has, has King and Queen stepped up his play?
I don't, I don't think anyone has any trouble with the salary increases to conform with the state code or state law. Perhaps not all at once, the fifteen percent's not due until January twenty, twenty-four, if those could be a little terminal. In fact, it will to another budget estimate. One item that I have a really hard time with is the free Wi-Fi, the Wi-Fi cards. Those were all paid for through cares and art and funding. And now it's going to come to the King and taxpayers to fund free Wi-Fi.
For twelve units, for seventeen thousand.
Well, I wouldn't say that seventeen thousand people are climbing to.
No, I'm just saying, that's how many's in the county. And for twelve units is not much, any way you look at it.
Again, Mr. Hodges, I'm asking, where do we go from here? It's a recommendation, level funding, go back?
Well, I've stated it all along, a level funding for me. I don't, I don't appreciate the tactics and we're going to open the door for these kind of tactics. We need to send a message.
And then read, read level funding as well.
As usual, I'm open, I'm open to, to trying to get, because I don't want, I don't want citizens who don't deserve to be caught in the middle of this to be harmed by this. I think my biggest problem was, was from the outset, you know, a hundred fifty thousand dollar increase on a single line item. Hanover and Mitchell, and I'm sure don't bet on either. And obviously, Hanover has the five hundred thousand dollar increase for the library is barely a percentage of their entire, you know, we're talking about a six hundred million dollar budget they're adopting this year, I think.
Over six hundred.
So there's just, there, there's not an appreciation, I don't feel, coming from somewhere of, of the scale of this, of what it means for Hanover to increase their give to the library by that amount of money versus what it is for us. Hanover came up with five hundred thousand dollars, how hard can it be for King William to come up with, you know, with a hundred fifty thousand dollars? That's taxing, that's a near two cent tax increase for us to be able to come up with a hundred fifty thousand dollars. So, um, you know, yeah, that's what's, that's what's really killing me is just from the outset, that there, there wasn't really, I don't think, an appreciation of what that number means to our budget. You know, certainly incremental increases, you know, I've always said not always one, but we need to be funding things at the level at which they need to be funded. But a thirty-three percent, hundred fifty thousand dollar increase on a, you know, on a, on a total general fund budget, just over thirty billion dollars, I mean, that's, talking about percentages, thinking what a fraction of Hanover's budget that is, and that's our whole budget. Hanover's increasing their budget this year more than our whole budget. So I just, for me, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm befuddled because I don't know how we could have ever gotten, I don't know how we could have ever, without literally talking about a, a tax increase. So that, that's it for me, you know? I, I would, I would love to be able to do some of it. At this point in time, even coming up with, with the revised number was somewhere between a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, we might be able to maintain level service, that is, that's not achievable. You know, at that point in time, you're literally talking about the decisions that we have left on the table are taking personnel out of, really where, who's got personnel they're getting this year? The sheriff's office has some personnel they're getting, you know, that could maybe cover the cost of that. And I don't, right? I know, so I just.
It was more than one evening.
I'm sure, I'm sure. And, and I'm sure, I'm sure from here, and there, there's, there's certainly an appreciation of it. But I just, I guess I'm frustrated by the fact that I would love to do something, but I don't know at this point what we can, because I don't, how to make a dent? And what's a dent? You know, how much money can we realistically expect to come up with this and fund it? I just, I'm just really, I'm sad about, right?
Yeah, it is. All right.
Thank you, Bishop. If you have any other suggestions or comments, you have our emails and phone numbers, please reach out. Mr. Ashford, we've got some school tax related by the business.
Mr. Chairman, the director finding.
Danny.
At the board's request, we are providing information to reduce the real estate tax rate for calendar year 2022 to eighty-three and a half cents for one hundred. Included in the package tonight is outlined the revenue modifications to the proposed budget for FY 23, which consists of tax reduction and actuals to date for this fiscal year. Overall general fund revenue reduction is one hundred thirty-seven thousand eighty-four. Any questions about what has been presented? I know you guys all were concerned about how that would affect different things. And we tried to outline the reduction revenues and any increase in revenues that we did, we could see based on actuals year-to-date to modify the budget request.
Right, and this is a good opportunity to always keep an eye on that balance since we have a split letter. Right, so, um, no, I, I, I think it's the right direction to, to move in on, on that side of funds especially, because obviously, it, it affects different districts differently, and we're mindful of that. So it's not also, I guess, for people listening and thinking, it's not like squeezing of a limb, which are literally two different funds in the same funds. One being dedicated entirely to schools versus the, the general fund side, where we're doing a very modest reduction compared.
I just.
Exactly.
Good evening, gentlemen, good evening. This is just to follow up on the last time personal property was discussed. And let you know that we are still working on the precise percentage of how to reduce, of what to reduce the personal property by vehicles. At issue has been that Edmonds receives the annual DMV download differently than what right to. Right now, it's, it's not automatic, it requires manual work. It will be automatically changed until the summer. And so we have been discussing among staff and with the commissioner of revenue, what we can do to expedite and to do the manual side of things that we haven't addressed yet. Here with her this morning, commissioner's staff is proceeding with doing it manually. There's been discussion with Essex and other localities that have evidence on their process to do that. That is the first part of the process to nail down what personal property tax really is, what the vehicle's value really is. From there, the numbers from the county go to J.D. Powers to be assessed, to get assessed values, and they come back. And from our discussions with the other localities, that part of the process has worked fine with Edmonds. It's just this first part of the process, and right now, they're proceeding with doing it in this manual way the other localities are doing. And just to reiterate from the previous meeting and the discussion, it's our understanding that the board wants to reduce, well, to keep the same tax rate, but then discount what is actually being paid in the bills to equalize with that. So the county has set its projected budget based on equal valuations from last year, just an increase in color in vehicles. What we will do, once we have these assessments, is reduce by a percentage to make that the true projection. So if it goes up thirty percent, then we would reduce vehicle bills by thirty percent.
J.D. Powers, do they evaluate the vehicle monthly? Do they, you know, the, the values, do they change monthly or?
I'm not entirely sure how to, how our values is vehicles.
I'm thinking that if it's going to be August, things could change drastically from now. I do see more vehicles in last now.
Well, I think we're, we're doing the values as quickly as possible. We can't wait till August, commissioner needs to, well, she needs to get information. West Point, they sent out their bills earlier than.
January, right?
Uh, June is when she needs to have everything done. For us, it doesn't affect us setting the tax rate, it doesn't set, affect us setting our budget, because we're going to make a discount to make that projection true. And we're funding on no value increases over last year.
Can you put that back in reverse? Back where you were talking about, after we send something back to J.D. Powers and then they process it, it'll go in Edmonds, what is that?
Right, so. And our cars, our, the vehicles that we have in the county, that information is coming from DMV with this annual download. They're going to send us their list of vehicles that are in the county, commissioner checks it off her list, what's in, what's out. Once we have the real list of what is in the county, that's what gets sent to the J.D. Powers to actually do the assessing. They send us back the assessed values of those vehicles.
Is there a delay in getting that from DMV?
Not from D, DMV. DMV, since we can get that download of information, that is what is not going into Edmonds automatically right now. Instead, what did take a number of hours, it takes a couple of weeks and these other localities to do manually.
Oh, true, because I'm still not getting how that, that goes. But that's, I don't need to, I'm sure you're doing all you can, but it, it seemed like if you can get it from DMV and we send it to J.D. Powers.
It's that, what we're getting from DMV, we don't just turn that right around. We have to check it against all of our numbers and make appropriate changes.
There's no way to check it.
Right.
Automatically.
Right.
Did Bright do that?
Bright did it automatically. And according to evidence, they're going to have a version upgrade in the middle of summer that will change that.
The fact remains is we are going to reduce.
Correct.
Citizens have to pay, we just don't know what the numbers are going to be.
Right, but we are working towards having valuations not increase over last year.
And it's going to be delayed going to West Point?
No, not yet. That's what's, that's the first deadline really, is what we're working towards is to make that deadline of getting the information to West Point. By there, by the time bills come out.
It goes, my understanding, you're not going to do the reduction for it.
I have not discussed with them.
Yeah, I think it's.
Yes, of course. Any other questions, sir? Thank you. Mr. Ashford, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to the board, ladies and gentlemen. If you recall, on March the fourteenth, when I proposed the FY 23 budget, I've included five new positions. Two were in dispatch in the sheriff's office, one was attorney, one in utilities, which was a growing entity in the county, and the other was in resources. Tonight, I come to you, still requesting those five positions, but I'm also asking for a sixth position, see. I'm asking you to consider placing in the finance department the position of reconciliation specialist. That position would handle primarily the reconciliation process that we need to get an annual audit, to monitor the monthly expenditures, the monthly journals, and make sure that all the information and make sure that all the information when it comes to do meets all the deadlines and order for us not to, they have the same situation that we're in now. And that is to have a delay in the audit process. That position would be approximately forty-seven thousand dollars if we include salaries and benefits. And the funding that was proposed for this would be taken from the treasurer's office and moved to the finance floor. Have any questions?
So to, just to be clear, it's a lateral move as far as funding it. We're just moving funding from one office and putting it in another. We're not.
That's correct.
Increasing. As overall sound.
Do we have the sheet coming?
A sheet? No. Again, the, the positions have been proper for you previously. The new, the new position, I think we changed some emails along with.
Yeah.
Can we, we can vote on that tonight?
Well, Mr. Chairman, obviously, the, the items under unfinished business were related to the budget. It would help if, if those decisions could be made somewhat tonight because Ms. Garland has to to compile all the numbers for your adoption consideration on May the ninth. If you're not in position to approve, that's fine. You still have May the ninth or you can be on to do that. But if you can make that decision this evening, then we will begin to, to put those numbers in place for your ultimate approval of the budget when, when you're ready for that.
What is our level of confidence that moving that position under the finance department will take care of this issue?
My commitment to this board would be that we can watch it every day. That is something that obviously would rest within the treasurer's office. It's, it's not under the same oversight, the same scrutiny. And I believe Ms. Garland understands the audit process she conducted through Edmonds with the county side of things. And what is delayed has been the, the activity within the school division and how it, and how it completes the audit. If we're allowed to have that position and with our oversight and honestly accountability to this board, I feel confident we can return to a process in which we have an annual audit easily. And not it has to be so, such a cumbersome process to where we will write up to a deadline. I told you before, the committee that gave you audit is your most fundamental aspect of reporting to the public. And when you don't meet those deadlines, it certainly raises suspicion as to what's, what's happening with our finances. We know our finances are sound. We know that every dollar can be accounted for. But when we don't have a complete document to reflect that, it, it does create some, some stress among the public and, and ask, ask questions that we sometimes can't answer.
So it's my understanding we have used our internal folks and external and still have not reconciled account.
But we're heading towards, that's what we, true answer is yes. We're, we're making progress with our external folks and he's hopeful, he set to me a deadline, an artificial deadline will help him connect and make it deep in order to get those documents.
So I know we got three involved now.
Yes.
You're not talking about the third?
I'm sorry. You're right. I was, the second one was in the
And that is stopped with no.
That did not work. That's correct.
With no records.
I'm sorry. That's correct. So, so far, do we know the total bonus?
I think Robert had was worth forty, forty, forty thousand.
Yes.
And we don't know the cost of what's going on.
Six thousand so forth.
With, well, it didn't find for me anyway. B M L, who are we talking about? The B M L group.
Yes, that's right.
And they're just working on a school, correct?
That's correct. They, I mean, they're not familiar with this a little bit, but there's not much, there's not much that has to be done.
County finance completed operating part of FY twenty-one's bank statements. He's just working on schools right now.
All right. So we're close to being reconciled?
Yes, he thinks we will be finished by May eighteenth.
How far behind was?
It had not been reconciled since Mr. Witt left and that was October first. And keep in mind, this year has not been reconciled at all.
Right.
And they'll probably have to catch up between May fifteenth and July one, too.
What do you have to do here to?
They were.
Motion?
I, I like it. Why can't you accept these new positions? Is that what we're talking about?
I'm not in favor of individually the, the five positions. You know, it's obvious what we're trying to do here. We're trying to help people, trying to reduce the real estate rate. We're trying to reduce personal property. We've been able to make ends, you know, to get the job done. This is not the time to call that any employees. I do support the record of reconciliation specialists. I do support that position. People are still struggling. I read today that we had eight point five percent inflation. So that's, that's just me. Those five positions I'm not in favor of.
But before we get to discussions, should we get through at least a motion in a second? If I get a second.
If we make, I just wanted to voice that I'm still not in favor.
I understand.
What's, what's the motion on specifically? Are we motioning all five positions or we just motioned?
That's what my wish.
Okay. Your motion was for all five. All right. Well, five plus the one. Yeah, no, I'll, I'll second Mr. Hodges' motion. I, I think the, the ones that we, you know, we're talking about. This position, one that is self-funded from utility fees, that's not stressing the general fund. Dispatch, which is already.
Two positions.
Right, but dispatch which is already well-stressed. And Jared Walton has been asking for these for some time.
Of course, you have heard of that.
Well, he takes what he can get, but we've talked about dispatch positions before, certainly. You know, we were able to do some deputies last year.
And equalize their salaries for the firing any amounts issue.
This, yes, but that's.
That should have been done at the beginning.
Right.
And not a description. One thing, and, and just, and I, I'm not sure if I am going out, but today, they were only lying, giving first aid over the phone. And I mean, that person is totally tired of it. And Garland's still taking calls at the same time. And that went on for what?
But Sheriff Walton said these two positions are not going to allow for extra staffing. So it's not going to be in, am I wrong, Sheriff Paul? Staffing is going to remain the same.
No.
These, these are to cover for vacations, absentees.
They would maintain a level of service inside of dispatch. And since they would add to that.
So your staffing would increase.
Yes.
And you don't always have vacation?
No, I'm saying if you have a free or two schedule, you're actually going to increase that staff for that shift.
I just want to follow you. If there's, if there's someone off, obviously we'd be one down. No matter how many people we had in there. This, this guaranteed we have a full coverage shift all the time.
We have twelve, right?
Eleven.
Eleven. And they were working three days on?
Working twelve hour shift, three days off, two days off, three days off.
Now that's overtime and you're spending roughly.
A lot. I don't know the amount right now. A lot.
Would it be a salary perhaps?
Oh, yeah.
More than a salary?
Probably more than a salary.
Any other discussion?
I'm not going to vote, vote in all six of them at one time either. So like I said, this is bad here. It's bad for everybody. Food's going up, gas is going up. There's a war. People are still, the treasurer and the commissioner of revenue have people having trouble paying the taxes. I don't think you need to be adding all this stuff either. I can maybe go with a couple, but not, not all six. But whatever we all vote on, so three we all vote, that's the way it goes.
Okay. Always voting in big. Oh, you mean on each position? All right. You just need a, another motion, I, I guess, to do that.
Just withdraw yours. Or we can hold the vote on this and then see what we get.
But I will keep running and see what we get.
Let's go ahead and hold the votes, Reg.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hey.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Yeah.
Mr. Muskowski?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, morning.
Hi. Next up, the capital improvements, Mr. Chairman.
At the March fourteenth meeting, we presented the county administration's proposed budget for fiscal year 2023. Included in the presentation was the capital improvement plan, the following are modifications of capital improvement plan for FY twenty-three. Removal of a total of five hundred fifty-three thousand, six hundred sixty-eight, which includes removal of AV car, AV car charging station, sixteen thousand, farmer's market, two hundred fifty thousand, library design for twenty-five thousand, juvenile building, general repairs for a hundred and fifty thousand, ass, assess, access security at courthouse for eighty-eight thousand and access security at admin for twenty-four thousand, six hundred sixty-eight.
And repeat, that's removed?
That's removed. But in reference to those two items I just mentioned, we are going to actually include a total cost for several other buildings in, in a package deal for access security. So it's not that we're taking those out, but we're adding it in as a whole for admin, juvenile building, historic courthouse, all that. So we, when I get down to the additional fees, you'll see that that comes back in. I wonder if I can kind of keep it simple. If you got, if you were looking at your capital improvement plan that was presented and then how it changed the new one. So the additional requests of the capital improvement plan includes adding two hundred fifty thousand to VIPS of convenience site solution, adjusting total request from one hundred fifty thousand to four hundred thousand for this project, fifteen thousand for utilities department, vehicle replacement upgrade, adjusting the total request from forty-five thousand to sixty thousand, generator for administration addition of forty-six thousand, welcome and courthouse signage addition of twenty thousand and access security to include courthouse, administration, juvenile building and historic courthouse for a total of a hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-one for all facilities. Are there any questions?
The vast convenience site, that was originally the two, well, one fifty, correct?
Yes, sir.
We are going to pursue the existing site, modify that in some way?
That's where we're headed. That'll be presented to you on May the ninth, but I believe that's
So is preparing that site going to cost? Is that what we're looking at?
Going with that. That's what we're looking at. We have not got a cost estimate on that. I am working on that with several people. But what we were doing is, is taking out from some of the projects that the board did not voice support for and trying to give a little bit more into the VIPS of problem to see what solution we could come up with.
Is that central?
Yes.
I thought it's just not a problem.
Well, it was a problem because it was a former dump and it was.
Ten acres there.
Yeah, it's ten acres.
But we talked at a high level with, I, I asked if we had actually gotten an engineer consultant to go out and test the soil there, test what capacity, what we could do on top. And we can't find a record of it actually being done professionally.
It was brought to us that truck and trailers did not operate on.
Right, but I don't, I don't think, it's from what I can find, it wasn't done professionally.
Okay.
We went out there and scraped some soil. So I wanted to just push that a little bit more. No one's come forward and given us land. So, and that is, it's a good site because it's close to all the residential there. So what I would like to do is serve the residential growth there as much as possible and potentially improve, especially F word and maybe landfill site as well to try and funnel some of the, the larger trailers and commercial business to them and improve residential at the high school.
So we're thinking we can get far enough, far enough off of Route thirty to eliminate the.
Yes, yes. That is the number one thing is to not have people queuing out there, you know, visibly a problem trying to get in and out of the highway.
I assume you're anticipating the, the growth that you're going to see here in the next.
Yes.
Five years.
Yes.
Years. Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Chairman? Anyone who wants to agree with your proposed requests? There is a slight reduction for the capital improvements. Any other comments, Mr. Chairman?
No, no.
Next up on the new business, we have resolution twenty-two dash twenty-nine, establishing a health insurance plan is ninety-two.
Hopefully, this is just some general housekeeping that we do every year. Tonight I have to perform your resolution twenty-two twenty-nine to approve our health insurance plan for FY twenty-three. Staffer, I'm in approval of this resolution. The funding will stay level. It's exactly the same as it was last year. Anthony did not increase our rates.
And it didn't increase less.
Correct.
What are we doing?
We have wonderful, healthy people and it's part of a pool. So with the other localities that we were pooled with to get this rate, everybody did really well last year, even with COVID. So even with COVID, they didn't increase, it didn't decrease, but you know, this day and age, I'm happy to accept no increase.
We just heard elaborated perspective.
I can't help them. So this is, this resolution is just presented to you to keep everybody's rate the same. The county's portion will stay the same. The employee's portion for each plan will stay the same as it has been at FY twenty-two and FY twenty.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve resolution twenty-two twenty-nine.
Twenty-two or twenty-three.
Twenty-two.
Actually.
Only one, I've got twenty-two.
Agenda is twenty-two.
It's, it's supposed to be twenty.
The actual resolution has twenty-three. My apologies.
So.
Move to the second, we further discussion.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Muskowski?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood? Chairman, morning.
Very lucky. That's probably one of the biggest.
It's a huge expense.
It is.
One more housekeeping item is the annual pay comp and classification plan. This remains the same as it was in February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty, in the past. It has been updated to reflect new positions that have come into the county since twenty-twenty. If you look at the department listing, but the actual pay classification scales have all been.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, approval of resolution twenty-two dash thirty.
I'm probably second. Further discussion, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Garber? Mr. Muskowski?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
And back for Mr. Garland with resolution twenty-two dash thirty-one, this will be your capital improvement plan.
Resolution twenty-two dash thirty-one is presented to my board consideration fiscal year twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-seven. Capital improvement plan for the total of thirteen million, six hundred eight, three thousand, six hundred thirty-six. Utilizing the funding structure as follows, sixty thousand for, from the utility fund, two hundred thousand from proper fund, one million, twenty thousand, one hundred and ninety from capital funds roll forward, two hundred and seventy-five thousand from capital infrastructure funds on hold, two million from ARBA funding, one million, five hundred fifty-nine thousand, six hundred thirty-six from. 1,559,636 from unassigned fund balance, and 8,568,810 for the utility bond. Staff recommends approval of resolution 22 dash 31.
No questions?
Motion to accept resolution 22 dash 30.
Sorry. Motion made seconded. Any further discussion?
Mr. Muskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood. Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Chairman Morris.
Hi. And ordinance 04 dash 22.
Ordinance 04 dash 22 is presented this evening for board consideration to approve property tax levies for calendar year 2022 with a board motion to adjust the school fund tax rate from 47 cents from 100 to 46 cents per.
And any questions? This completely funds the schools?
Yes, it does.
Now. In ordinance 4 dash 22, we have only line 22, it still have 47.
That's why Chris and I had talked and what she had recommended is if the board makes a motion to modify that, she can do, you can still approve it.
I'll make a motion to modify line 22, the assessed value of real estate to 46 cents from 47.
Awesome, done. Motion made to reduce the school real estate from 47 to 46 cents, properly seconded and further discussion. Mr. Branch?
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Muskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Chairman Morris.
No further discussion from the last time this was presented. We're proposing a hundred dollar increase on water connection fees up to two inches because the county will be installing those meters instead of the contractor.
Just one question. I see the date of May the first. Are there folks that have permits that have already put them in? Are they going to be on the old feed?
Whoever has already gotten their meter to put in, they're not paying to do it.
Yeah, it's just a real, it's the end of the week.
It would be whoever is coming in after that.
Any other questions? More motion to approve, so Mr. Chairman. Seconded, any further discussion?
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Muskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Chairman Morris.
Hi. Mr. Hodges.
As I brought to you a couple of months ago, be scheduled for the planning and zoning is correct. Propose to be changed, not so much to increase revenues as much as to make it a cleaner process and to weight commercial a little heavier than residential. So for zoning variances, fields, anything that had a fee plus advertisement where we would have to go back and charge somebody after the fact, we have just made that a flat fee. And then for some residential and the land services, we've cut residential beats out and just made it commercial fees. The only additions since the last time I presented, discuss with the concept plan review fee of $30.
And roughly how much time and effort compared to a cycle?
Concept plan review is very little, about half an hour, half hour.
Mr. Chairman, I'm approving resolution 22 dash 32.
So we properly started and further discussion?
Mr. Muskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Chairman Morris.
Hi. We have a county administrator with. Joe Integusen or?
General of the Department of Animal Shelter, I mean, she has updated the project involving cats and the community activity.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. I've got a letter I was going to leave with Chris to get to you all, sorry it's late. Um, I'm actually going to turn this over to Alice with Homeward Trails. We kind of worked together on the report that she received in her packet. But she's got probably more to say about the event than I did.
Good evening again. And I always have a lot more to say. I will just confirm that. The last time I was here, I talked to you gentlemen about the trap to return event that we had planned April 1st to the 5th. We had done an event in King Williams, so we were a little apprehensive. We didn't know what to expect from the community. And we were absolutely overwhelmed with response. We had, so there were three staff members, myself, Jane Fitzlawton, and then Kelsey McCree. We came from Northern Virginia and Maryland. And by the way, excuse my tired today. I was trying to trap an injured cat that did not want to cooperate today. So it put me back a couple hours. We held the event over at the shelter, the regional shelter. Lori Betts and her staff were amazing. We were able to trap 70 cats. 48 were from King William and 22 were from King and Queen. So I think that shows, you know, 31% of the King and Queen really shows that they need to get involved. And I'll be heading over to speak with their board supervisors soon because their community was very appreciative. What we did is we trapped the cats and held them at the shelter and then we transported them to Roanoke, which as you all know, it's a good four hour drive. So we spent eight hours driving on Sunday and then eight hours driving on Monday because we had to go back and pick them up. There were 32 females that were spayed and 20 of them were pregnant. That's a lot of kittens that were prevented. There were 13 colonies, meaning locations that were actually targeted. 82 cats originally was the original number and we were able to get 85%. So it's a pretty huge success rate. And all the years I've done that, that's going to higher success rates. We are working with Indian Rivers Community Society and the Regional Animal Shelter to finish these spayed neuters. Five were actually sent for surgery today. All the surgeries except for four were paid by our organization, Homeward Trails. Indian Rivers paid for the other four. The total amount for surgeries was 2,957 surgeries, I'm sorry, dollars. So 2957 with an average of $44 per cat. That's a, that's a pretty low rate and we were very lucky for Angels of Stacy's Roanoke to work with us. So 67, 66 surgeries were done in Roanoke and then Smokies and Mechanicsville were able to do the other four for us. The cats were spayed or neutered. They were microchipped. They got the rabies vaccine and their just temper vaccine. And also we, in order to identify that they'd been spayed or neutered, their left ear was tipped about 3 eighths of an inch. As far as community support, I was, I really was overwhelmed. We had a total of 11 volunteers and six of those actually saw my plea during the event to say, we need some more help. And I left my phone number on the Facebook post and we were putting it on all the different community posts and people were texting. And we actually got to the point where we had to turn a couple of folks away, but we told them that we would be back to do this again soon. I did want to mention a couple of businesses, Blue Crab, Forecall's Ace Hardware. They supply lunches and supplies amongst other private donors. And one lady, Mrs. Debbie Davis, made a huge pound case for all the volunteers, which they really appreciated that. So the future plans I wanted to talk about, on April 30th at Tony and George's restaurant, we're going to be holding a training because we're helping the Indian Rivers Community Society, along with the shelter, form a foster program. We're going to see a lot of kittens soon and we want to have folks that are able to come in and take care of these bottle babies. It's an amazing experience and I think that we're going to be overwhelmed this summer. Well, I shouldn't even say this summer. I'm going to say in probably about two or three weeks, we're going to start seeing them if we haven't already. So members of the public are putting that out there. It's from 1:30 to 4:00 PM. And then our next TNR schedule is August 26th to the 31st. And we will be targeting 100 cats. I don't think we should have a problem with that. And I wanted to again thank Lori Betts and her staff for all of their support, their hard work and efforts. I mean, they, we literally came in and took over their shelter for about five days and they, they were just amazing. They have so much experience there, dedication. I, I've never seen anything like it. Also, the animal control officers in King Way, they couldn't have been better. And they were telling us about places that we should look into as far as colonies. And so I'm going to be riding along with their ACOs soon to target these folks and target in a good way and to talk with them and get some resources to them. I also wanted to give a special thank you to Dr. Caitlin Mason. She gave up her Saturday to come in and look at all the cats that we had trapped so far and made sure everybody was healthy. And if she saw any kind of illness or injury, she made note of that. And she was able to help us sex those cats that were in these traps, which is not always easy. So she, she was a huge help. She came from a couple of counties over. I think that that's all I had to share about this topic. But I did want to, I don't know if it's appropriate and you can please tell me if it's not. I did want to just say something about the dangerous dog ordinance. You know, being an own control officer for 15 years, gnarly to, and I was chief of the own control. I did want to tell you that we just went through this in a mechanic alley in the Southwest that you don't need to change anything or do anything. What we always did is we always wrote this 3.2 dash 6540, which is the state law. We had in local ordinance before the state law came around, but we never even wrote that local ordinance. So I hope that helps in some way. It's just, just use the state law. So it's, it covers everything.
So. I think that's what the chair of the committee.
Yeah, he was right. I just wanted to sort of reiterate and, you know, just kind of put my word in. So I apologize. I was, you know, too ballsy or whatever. But does anybody have any questions?
Have you got any flyers for these two future events that you put up here and maybe the town hall?
I, we do have flyers and I'm sure that Lori or someone, or her staff members can drop that off tomorrow. Yeah. Let me put that up.
One question, one of these names, Romabel Gina Federoff.
Yes.
At one point in time, it was a, she was part of an organization that had actually trapped feral cats. Is that still on?
Yes.
The Four Poles?
Yeah, it's the correct story. Yeah, it's the, Forecall's is owned by Indian River Community Society. And I actually do have a letter from Gina. She's killing a, her foot from surgery. So if you don't mind, I'd like to read a paragraph from her because her, her group was really instrumental in doing this. Indian Rivers Community Society is extremely grateful to Homeward Trails for not only putting the TNR clinic together, but also for paying the cost of clinic. We are a very small group dedicated to helping to solve the feral cat problem. The TNR clinic fixed 70 cats and 90 unwanted kittens were not born as a result. Just imagine 90 kittens that would have been left fending for themselves. This is why it is so important to bring awareness to our community and get them involved. And that is exactly what this TNR clinic accomplished. Beaters of colonies were educated on the importance of spaying neuter and we were able to work side by side with volunteers and our local regional animal shelter. This was a very exciting event for us. We are looking forward to doing it again and are hoping to have more volunteers and support from our counties. Gina Federoff. And I think we just, you have copies of the letter now from Gina. Any questions? I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add, I look forward to continuing to work with administration and the board of supervisors to hopefully put in place in the future a community cat coordinator. You know, if we can do 10 cats a week, that's 520 cats. Imagine if we can do 20 cats a week. Homeward Trails is not going to keep coming here twice a year or a couple of months because they've got other places they need to go to to try to get some things started. So we are certainly willing and I think the community is willing to try to put an end to the overpopulation problem of cats.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I know that you have my report in your, in your package, the amended ones, you know, I gave you one when your package goes out and I try to update it as recent as today for any activities that need to be submitted. I want to thank you for your support for Public Service Week. And as the chairman outlined, there are a number of events that we have planned for employees beginning next week. All of you are always invited to, to, we invite you to come and interact with our, with our folks whenever you can. Just a couple of highlights within the report. I won't go over every item, but if you go to item 3, sometimes people ask the question, well, how effective is our website or any website too? And I stand to let you know that we still believe that our website is the, is the number one way with citizens engaged with us. People sometimes say with Facebook and maybe it's some other way, but our website is it. And our provider provided us with some statistics that were interesting. If you begin with May of 2020 to the end of 2021, there was a 30% increase in the overall visits. And I think that has a lot to do with the way our website has been updated regularly. Mr. Branch and the department director, the manager, who wrote the job in that respect and will continue to do that. But if you look at the top page visits that people go to, why do they want to come to our site? The real estate tax cards is number one. Maps generally, people want to know how to get around the county. The treasurer's office is, is third. Online payments is fourth. Various departments just generally, people just navigating through the site. And then the retrieval of forms, I thought was interesting. Now, we need to continue to do a good job in making those forms as interactive as possible so people cannot just download the forms, but maybe there are certain things that they can type in that will go directly to the department and we, we hope to get to that. So I wanted to share that with you to let you know that the website is important. So I wanted to share that with you to let you know that the website is important and we'll continue to keep it updated. If you go over to the, the second page, item number ten, we don't talk about this project probably as much as we should because it's of major importance to the county. That's our, our public radio system. As you know, we have a partnership with the county of Hanover. And on the week of May twenty-third, the foliage test will be taken, which will lead to the total upgrade of the radio system if that test passed. And we're hopeful right after that that it could go live as late as June or, or excuse me, as early as June or early July. So there's been a lot of work put in, the sheriff's office, R I T, R I T people have worked it. And we have a good relationship with Hanover and we'll hope to continue to maintain that. There was a question asked, as you know, there was a piece of property that's to be donated to the county with the location of the new water tower that's off of Manfield Road. What is the, the value of that donation? It's been established at twenty-five thousand dollars. And then the last one that I would like to point out is that we received some, a request from the York River and the Small Coastal Basin Roundtable. They'd like to paint a tree somewhere around the administration building to commemorate Eugene Rivera as a lifetime achievement award winner. Mr. Rivera was beloved community leader here who received a resolution of appreciation by the board of supervisors for his community service not long before his death in twenty twenty. I'm sure many of you probably remember that. I would think, we probably don't have a precise location yet.
No, they're looking.
But that's, but they do, I would never plan anything or build anything unless it has board approval. So with your direction, if you want to do this, we will find the appropriate place to, to plant this tree.
Would you like a motion for that?
It might be nice to put it in the record. That way the family will see it.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, Eugene's a dear friend of mine. So I'd like a motion if we allow that.
I'll say. Move to the second, any discussion? I would like to interject that we have a plaque of some sort, just designating what it's for and who it's for.
Excellent.
At the same time.
Excellent.
Ms. Branch?
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Mr. Missalsky.
Aye.
Chairman Moore.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, as always, following my report, you have a number of reports from county departments and agencies. And if you have any questions about any of those, try to aim for them before we can get to you. Or they have a lot of good information provided by our department.
That's one question, Sheriff. It looks like they're a little busy much. I don't have last month's February report.
They may be done.
Business is bad.
That means, is that why these are the others coming up?
Any other comments, questions, or any questions? Well, thanks for the force. Hopefully we have time to review it. All right. I'm inside, I've lost track. So Mr. Garber, how do you bring this on?
Well, thank everybody for coming. Everybody will, I just, we're already, I'm not against those positions. It's just the environment that we, you know. You know, it's, it's just not technical. That's pretty much it. Thanks. The comment is not quite as big a crowd as we had last time. I guess people weren't enthused as they were last time. So a few people on Zoom did. And that's another thing I found out from some constituents, they're still, like you said, not informed about how rules go. They don't understand that they need to sign up before sort of with branch to get that on our website, as you said, Mr. Moore. That they really know the rules. Yeah, that's something they don't see. And, and I want to say something, Mr. Garber, I'm not against it either. I mean, a lot of people in my district have come and asked, still throw some cuts. Anybody comes and saying that, oh, yeah, it's extra spending is fine, but I don't disagree. As Mr. Missalsky said, if any of these things, it's nice to have all of these things. I wish you had the money like Hanover's, just say we can do all of it. Yeah, that'd be great, but I feel the impact of it and I've seen first hand, a lot of my citizens have trouble making some exams. That's on me as well. Saying that as well. So thanks, everybody, for coming.
Mr. Missalsky?
So my only point tonight is we had, and move forward with this process as we, we continue to settle things with the budget process. You know, I hope when it comes time to vote on the, the document as a whole, there's consideration given to, you know, not everybody's getting everything they want for sure. There is. But there's some significant, I think, wins in there for both filling the, the needs of this organization and also being able to give back to citizens in the form of tax deduction. So I hope when it comes time to vote on the entire document, we've had our opportunity to share a piece on how we feel about a specific item. But we reflect upon documents as a whole and take into account the things that, that we are doing to try to ease the burden on citizens while also making sure that we, we can meet the mission that we have here as an organization.
No, a whole lot. Just, again, I, I think that these positions were important. I think you would be doing financially sound by doing them now. I did witness that this afternoon with that rescue. I mean, they were in there talking to person through CPR. I don't know the results, but I mean, there's nothing that person can do after they start it. They've got to stay on that till the end. Till rescue gets there. And it just happened to happen today before we came to the event. And they are busy in there and, and again, there have always been different opinions. And the votes will always go by, but they never will. And they should. I, I think it was responsible to do it now. I think it's time to do it. I didn't really see where not doing it would have sent anything back to, to the citizens in any kind of payment. Unless we were going to cut it down a percent, but I never heard another one offered either. But anyway, that's all I have. Appreciate everybody coming and, and the interest from the public.
I believe that the positions are necessary. We, we caught quite a few from the original offer. I can't imagine just seeing the increase in the sheriff's department activities going on. It's, it's not going to get any easier. That's a very, very stressful position. Had it done myself, I can only imagine to to watch and listen to that. Two positions will offset the stress, allow more training, more familiarization, and a better result for the citizens. Mr. Missalsky's comments. Thank you for coming online as well. And gentlemen, I'd like to get a motion to convene a closing meeting.
I'll be, that motion I guess, a motion to convene a closing meeting in accordance with section two point two dash thirty seven eleven A one for the Code of Virginia to consider personnel matter involving performance of specific public officers and employees and the employment of individuals to boards and commissions. And in accordance with section two point two dash thirty seven eleven A twenty-nine, the Code of Virginia to discuss the terms or scope of a public contract means because of discussion in an open session adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the board.
Second.
Motion, obviously, second. Before we go to the discussion, Ms. Branch?
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Mr. Missalsky.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Yeah, I saw that. Mr. Chairman, we would be in the, in the. Yeah, we got it.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Mr. Missalsky.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Chairman Moore.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, we best are one.
Say. Ms. Branch?
Mr. Missalsky.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Chairman Moore.
We have two appointments this evening. If I could get, um, Mr. Missalsky.
See, yeah.
Resolution daily two, that's twenty-five, appointment to tribal alcohol safety action program. Board directors, where Reverend William Lee Palmer Jr. was appointed to tribal alcohol safety action program. Order for three-year term in July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four by resolution twenty-one dash sixty on July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. And where Reverend Palmer has resigned disposition on his case at board active April first, twenty twenty-five. And where Nancy Cuddy has expressed interest in appointment to tribal board. He said, board of directors and where his board supervisors now desires to make an appointment or reappointment to this position. Now therefore, the Arizona board supervisors, the Kingview County, Virginia, that Nancy Cuddy appointed to tribal board. A set board of directors will remain your three-year term ending July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four down this twenty-fifth day, April twenty twenty.
I think that is the most.
Second. Second. Motion, second, Ms. Branch?
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Mr. Missalsky.
Aye.
Chairman Moore.
Mr. Chairman, resolution twenty-two, this twenty-six, applying to the historic preservation and architectural review board. Whereas the historic preservation and architectural review board is desired to have board member to H P A R V with the architecture credential and background. Whereas Steve Hudgens, Kingman County Deputy County Master has expressed interest in appointment to the H P A R V. And whereas board supervisors approved Mr. Hudgens' eligibility for appointment to the H P A R V with regards to disemployment by Kingman County. And whereas board supervisors now desires to make appointment to this position as requested by the H P A R V. Now therefore, be resolved, board supervisors of Kingman County, Virginia, that Steve Hudgens be appointed to the historic preservation and architectural review board for a four-year term ending April the third, twenty twenty-six, so I guess twenty today, April.
Move to the second, Ms. Branch?
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Mr. Missalsky.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Chairman Moore.
Aye. Motion to.
Mr. Chairman, send him.
Jump up.
Second. Okay, all the voters say aye?
Aye.